Calling to order the Monday, March 18th, 2019, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbick.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve with the following change. We move item number three from the consent agenda to item 11 on the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Stedman. Any additions, changes, or corrections with that? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Turbick.
Yes. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us today is Reverend Thiel Sullivan.
Let's pray. Our God in heaven, we thank you for this day that you've given to us. Every day we wake up, we recognize that it's a gift, and so we say thank you for your blessings on our lives. We thank you for our city, which is a special place to live and to work and to do business, and we thank you, God, for the leadership that you've given us in our city. We thank you that you give them wisdom in all the matters and the decision-making that they have to do. God, it behooves us to pray blessing over those in leadership over us at all levels, and so we pray for our city council and for our mayor and for those that serve in all of the areas in Berkeley. God, there's lots of needs represented amongst them, and so we ask that you would minister to those needs, things, God, that are not discussed or talked about out in public, but we ask that you'd meet their needs in a special way, that they'd know that you are involved in their lives. God, in this time tonight, as there's honor given to individuals and as there's decisions made, we ask for you to be known in this place and that you would guide and direct. In Jesus' name we pray these things. Amen.
Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now time for citizens' comments, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Okay. Seeing no mad rush to the microphone, anybody looking around seeing who's going to make the first move? Speak now, forever? Okay. All right. We will move on from citizens' comments. Next up, we move to our order of business today. First, our consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, March 4th, 2019. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1336. Ordinance number 00219. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amending Division 4 of Article 8 of Chapter 82, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to prohibit the possession and use of cigarettes, tobacco, and nicotine products by minors and the sale, giving, and furnishing of cigarettes, tobacco, and nicotine products, including electronic cigarettes to minors. I'm sorry.
We was going to wait until you were done.
Ordinance number 00319. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amending Section 50.73 of Article 3 of Chapter 50, fireworks of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to modify and reduce to days and times when the ignition discharge use of consumer fireworks is lawful. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall Library and Community Center. Proclamation number P0119. Matter of proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Resolution number R0319. Matter of adopting a resolution recognizing Eric Moran for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And resolution number R0419. Matter of adopting a resolution recognizing Ethan Hill for achieving the rank of Golden Palm Eagle Scout.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and bearing in mind that 0219 is no longer on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Any other additions or corrections on our consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbick.
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has been passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on our regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
We have a number of proclamations and presentations today. I've asked Mayor Pro Tem Baker to read proclamation P0119.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas, abuse and neglect are suffered upon children in our communities regardless of age, race, gender, or economic situation. And whereas, one in 10 children will be sexually abused before the age of 18. And whereas, this reported maltreatment is only a portion of the overall problem threatening our children. For so many cases go unreported, and today's technology has brought with it a new and dangerous form of child endangerment, the online predator. And whereas, the devastating consequences of physical and emotional abuse of our children affects the community as a whole, and finding solutions needs to be attended to by the community as a whole. And whereas, the State of Michigan has mandatory reporting by professionals working with the children of any suspected abuse and neglect incidences, which is a major step, but more is needed by the community. And whereas, the Care House of Oakland County works to break the cycle of child abuse and neglect, provides a protective circle of lights and hope for a better life, and advocates for the safety and protection of children. And whereas, the Care House of Oakland County partners with community organizations and agencies to offer programs and services aimed at preventing child abuse and neglect, knowing the effective programs succeed because of the involvement and partnerships created among the schools, social service agencies, religious and civic organizations, the business community, and law enforcement agencies. Children deserve to grow and thrive in an environment that nurtures and keeps them safe. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Berkeley do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley, Michigan. We call upon all citizens, community agencies, organizations, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent the abuse of children, thereby strengthening and protecting the community in which we live. Proclaim this 18th day of March, 2019, at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Berkeley. Daniel J. Turbick, Mayor. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. For our next two resolutions, could I have Ethan and Eric please come up to the microphone? All right. So before we honor you, I want to congratulate both of you. We have Councilmember Gavin, Councilmember Stedman will be reading the respective resolutions, and we will start with Eric.
I've got Ethan.
Look in the other direction, but...
Just getting you ready.
Making sure you're not falling behind.
This is a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Eric Moran for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And congratulations, that is a wonderful honor, and obviously you've put a lot of work into it. Whereas Eric Moran will graduate from Churchill Community High School in May of 2019 and will be attending Oakland Community College in fall of 2019. And whereas Eric Moran began scouting with Cub Scout Pack 1082 in 2006. At the age of six years old, in 2010, Eric moved into Troop 1085 where he achieved the rank of Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star, and Life. And whereas Eric Moran, in order to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, partnered with the City of Berkeley Parks and Recreation in order to renovate Oxford Towers Park. Eric's efforts to clean the park set the stage for the installation of game tables throughout the park along with the installation of a sandbox. And whereas, on October 29th, 2018, Eric Moran passed his Eagle Board of Review. Eric has earned a total of 30 merit badges. Eric is one of the 4% to achieve this honor nationally. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the City Council does hereby recognize and congratulates Eric Moran for his achievement in attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and expresses our pride in his accomplishments as a role model for others. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, March 18th, 2019, and that was signed by Daniel J. Turbick, Mayor. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good work.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Ethan Hill for achieving the rank of Gold Palm Eagle Scout. Whereas Ethan Hill will graduate from Berkeley High School in June of 2019, and he has run on the cross-country and track team for the past four years, earning letters in both sports. And whereas Ethan Hill has been active in scouting for the past 11 years, earning the rank of Tenderfoot, Second Class, First Class, Star, and Life, and has served as the troop historian, patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, senior patrol leader, and assistant scout master of Troop 1085. And whereas Ethan Hill, outside of Troop 85, has served as quartermaster for his National Jamboree Contingent Troop, as troop guide for the National Youth Leadership Training, and a langamatt chairman for the Leila Hockey Order of the Arrow Chapter. And whereas Ethan Hill is attending Wayne State University—go Warriors, nation— in the fall of 2019, and he will be majoring in journalism. And whereas Ethan Hill, to attain rank of Eagle Scout, worked with the Detroit Dog Rescue to build a number of elevated dog beds in order to aid the Detroit Dog Rescue when caring for dogs with joint issues. And whereas, on December 17th, 2018, Ethan Hill passed his Eagle Board of Review. Ethan has earned a total of 32 merit badges, 13 of them being Eagle Required, which are some of the most difficult in scouting. Ethan is one of the 4% to achieve this honor nationally. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the City Council does hereby recognize and congratulates Ethan Hill for his achievement in attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and expresses our pride in his accomplishments as a role model for others. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, March 18th, 2019, Daniel J. Turbick, Mayor.
Congratulations. Nice job. Awesome.
Congratulations. Excellent.
Ethan and Eric, would you like to say anything? You have the opportunity now. Camera's on you. Everybody's watching at home. They love to hear from you.
No badge for public speaking, I take it.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, anyways, congratulations, as was read by my colleagues here. It is a truly incredible accomplishment, you know, 4%, but the amount of time, work, and service that you put in to attain this rank is absolutely commendable, and it's an honor for us to just be able to at least recognize you tonight. So thank you guys both, and congratulations again. Last time. Sure you don't want to talk. Eric? No? Okay. All right. Seeing nobody rushing up to the microphone, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving the Just Credit Union Spirit of Main Street grant presentation to Dan Stockyev and Ari Zartarian, owners of Folio Offices.
All right. Ms. Carmody.
Yeah, so as a Main Street community now, we get the added benefit of being eligible, or our business owners being eligible, for certain grants through Main Street Oakland County, and we applied for a grant on behalf of Ari and Don, or Dan, with Folio Studios, which is also, if you remember, where the DDA will eventually have its office. So we're eagerly awaiting the opening, which now they tell me will be April-ish. Anyway, we applied. We had given them a facade grant, and that was the matching money that was required in the grant, but it was a great project and genesis. And Main Street Oakland County, feel free to come up, you guys. Anika is our rep from Main Street Oakland County. Dan and Ari are our two business owners who are making the investment, and it's a great project, and we're excited that Genesis has, you know, helped to add to this by this generous gift of, I think it's $2,500, so...
$1,250.
$1,250, sorry.
There's a big check to prove it.
I'm jumping ahead of myself.
That's a big check, yeah.
My name is Anika Norris. I'm with Main Street Oakland County. I happen to be liaison for this community and get to work with Vivian, and you guys have been a select community now for a year, I believe? Or is this going on your second year, almost? So we're just really happy to be able to work with Genesis to provide some extra funding because it doesn't matter how much money you have. Everybody needs some extra funding, right? And this one's pretty cool because it's for small businesses specifically. So to be able to get those startup businesses, it's kind of a requirement, so under a year, we tweaked it a little bit, or under five years, sorry, but it's pretty cool to be able to work with Genesis and that they're so willing to help out these communities, and we're just pretty excited to be able to do this.
Yeah. So if you'd like, we can do the presentation. Do you guys want to just stand, and we'll just line up here? And then I think the gentleman here is going to take a picture. Does that work?
That's great. That's perfect.
That's our staff photographer, yeah.
A man of limitless talents. You guys need to get in a little more here?
Come on in. The water's fine.
All right. One, two, three. Okay, we'll do one more. One, two, three.
Nice.
Would you guys like to say anything? We got a microphone just itching for someone to talk into.
I think you guys know I'm not a public speaker.
One of you is.
Thank you to Genesis and the county, and obviously to the Berkeley Council for all of their help, and we look forward to being members of the community, and hopefully we'll be open soon.
Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
At this time, I do want to, as a brief point of order, I wanted to recognize and thank all of the other scouts that showed up for the presentation for our two Eagle Scouts just a few minutes ago. And I did tell somebody that it would be okay to leave. You would not be stuck for the whole meeting. So if you would like to make an exit, now would be a perfect time to do that before we get into the rest of the agenda. I don't want anyone to feel like they're stuck in there. Thank you, school board member Roger Blake. Leading the charge. Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. You're certainly welcome to stay. I'm not kicking anybody out. Okay. All right. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M1519, matter of amending the City of Berkeley's fee schedule for the public library effective April 1st, 2019.
Is there a motion to approve M1519? Motion approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is the time of year, as we go through the budget cycle, where we start to take a look at the fee schedules for our various departments. The first to come before you, and the gentleman that's most on top of things here for the fee schedule, is our library director, Mr. Matt Church. He included a memo with the materials for the packet, sort of outlining some of the goals and the individual changes to the fee schedule itself, and he's also available here for questions of need.
Mr. Director, anything you'd like to add?
So I'll just run over things briefly with you. We're looking at modifying the library's fee schedule. We lasted this a few years ago, so wanted to come back and take a look at things again. So goals going into this process, we're standardizing our per-day and our maximum fines by material type. So there's a lot of detail here. I'm going to try not to bore you all with all the details, but we just wanted to standardize things so that when people come up to the front desk and are trying to understand what the fee is for, it's just a set fee by material type rather than one price for youth books, one price for adult books, one price for paperbacks, just kind of a standard fee that's easier to explain, easier to understand. Some of our maximum overdue fees, so that's the maximum charge that you can pay in overdue fees on an item, I'm looking at lowering that to $5 as a maximum, just to bring it more in line with the current replacement costs. So DVDs, for example, used to have a $10 maximum overdue fee. Those of us who shop on Amazon, you know that you can buy most DVDs for $10. So we want to bring it back into alignment with actual replacement costs now. Our goal here is to get people to return the items rather than for us to collect the fees. If the maximum fee is too high, then they may just say, "I'll keep the item and just pay the fee." Video rental fees, so we're one of the few libraries in the area that charges for DVD and Blu-ray rentals. What I'm proposing is the elimination of the old video fee, so we would charge only for the new release films. So people come in, they get a new release, it's basically an overnight rental for a dollar. That would remain in place, but then our older existing collection would not have a charge. Also looking at eliminating the $1 guest pass for public computer usage. That made, I think, a lot more sense when computers were brand-new and more exciting. They're much more common now. People have their own devices, so I don't think that's a fee that really we need to collect and levy as it comes up. We're looking at adding in two fees. That would be color copying fee and a color printing fee. Color copying is coming in this year to the library lineup, and then color printing will be added next year. That's the overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Are there questions for our librarian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for, as always, ensuring that we strike the appropriate balance between providing quality services with the residents and also maintaining some degree of appropriate fee schedule to keep operations smooth as well. With these adjustments, we remain in alignment with or ahead of our neighboring communities in terms of the services that we provide and the rates that we charge?
Yes. Yeah. I feel good about this. One of the new trends right now in libraries is the elimination of overdue fees entirely. I don't think we're there. I'm not proposing that at all, but libraries, especially some of the bigger libraries, are starting to talk about that from a more philosophical perspective, kind of removing all barriers to access. So we're not out on that forefront, but I think that these changes will bring us nicely in line with other libraries and good service to our community.
Thank you. Nice.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, Matt, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You do a tremendous job, and our city's very lucky to have the offerings and the support that our library offers for all of our residents. And if there are no further questions, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M1519?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbick.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding the reprogramming of fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program funds.
I will now open the public hearing at 7:26. I'll give you guys a little time. Look at the reprogramming of our CDBG funds, 2016. Okay. Seeing nobody coming to speak during the public hearing, I will close the public hearing at 7:27. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R0519, matter of considering our approval to reprogram funds from the fiscal year 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program to the ADA Sidewalk Program in the amount of $7,816.87.
Is there a motion to approve R0519?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Our Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, as you'll often hear us refer to it in the shorthand, is a federal program that is administered, in our case, through Oakland County along with several other municipalities in Oakland County. Because it's a federal program, there are very stringent guidelines on how we can use these monies, and so what we have to do each year is sort of go to the drawing board and see how can we best use these funds. One of our more successful areas that we've been able to utilize these funds, and so far, has been under the headway of removing architectural barriers. And we'd like to continue to do that. Because we had a balance of a similar program in 2016, the rules for utilizing these funds say we have to go through a process called reprogramming. One of the requirements is the public hearing. That requirement we just satisfied, but now we also would need this body to actually pass a resolution allowing us to do so. So in your packets, we've got quite a bit of background information here on the application and how we intend to use those funds, and you get a sense of what the paperwork looks like and what they're looking for as we submit these items. But essentially, by reprogramming these monies, we don't end up forfeiting them because they've gotten to the point where there are a couple of years—you can only bank a couple of years. 2016 is the last year we'll be able to do so. If the city did not reprogram into an updated program, then we would actually end up forfeiting those back to Oakland County, and they would use them somewhere other than Berkeley likely. So we want to keep these federal funds, fairly provided funds, within the city's limits, and that is why this resolution and public hearing request comes before you today.
Questions from council regarding the CDBG? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick one. So I know it was addressed a little bit in the packet already, but so if the cost to construct is higher than our CDBG... Because it's a federal program, there are very stringent guidelines on how we can use these monies, and so what we have to do each year is sort of go to the drawing board and see, how can we best use these funds? One of our most successful areas that we've been able to utilize these funds, and so far, has been under the headway of removing architectural barriers. And we'd like to continue to do that. Because we had a balance of a similar program in 2016, the rules for utilizing these funds say we have to go through a process called reprogramming. It's, one of the requirements is the public hearing, that requirement we just satisfied, but now we also would need this body to actually pass a resolution allowing us to do so. So, in your packets, we've got quite a bit of background information here on the application and how we intend to use those funds, and you get a sense of what the paperwork looks like and what they're looking for as we submit these items. But essentially, by reprogramming these monies, we don't end up forfeiting them, because they've gotten to the point where there are a couple of years, you can only bank a couple of years, 2016 is the last year we'll be able to do so. If the city did not reprogram into an updated program, then we would actually end up forfeiting those back to Oakland County, and they would use them somewhere other than Berkeley, likely. So, we want to keep these federal funds, fairly provided funds, within the city's limits, and that is why this resolution and public hearing request comes before you today.
Questions from council regarding the CDBG? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick one, so I know it was addressed a little bit in the packet already, but, so if the cost to construct is higher than our CDBG, CDBG, construction cost, the ADA construction cost, do we have funds prepared to finish that work? And then similarly, if it's a little bit short, do we have funds that, or, excuse me, if the costs are a little bit less to reconstruct, do we have something else that we plan to use it on to make sure they aren't recaptured by the county?
It would be yes on both. We have a project that we know is going to be, is gonna at least utilize those 2016 funds. If we do end up having a surplus after we continue this, finish this program, those would be the $20, $18, and then we would have some time to either add them to an existing program in the following year, or at least bank them for two years while we do a larger ADA ramp kind of program. So, the amount of money that we get in individual years is not typically enough to make a worthwhile project. That is the exact reason why we like to bank these funds, and so we would likely take the same approach as we have with the funds so far.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Additional questions, comments on this? Seeing none, anybody else want to come up to the microphone as we go through the CDBG reprogramming? Okay, seeing nobody approaching, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-0519?
Henin?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrant.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-1619, matter of awarding the contract for professional engineering services, 2019 CDBG sidewalk grant replacement program to Hubble Roeth and Clark, from the CDBG fund balance of $44,916.87, $7,816, and $37,100 from the 2016 and 2017 program years.
Is there a motion to approve M-1619?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I'll speak quickly about the legalities of it, but we do have the city's public works director, as well as the city's, a representative from the city's engineer here as well. Essentially, what we have to do is, now that we have reprogrammed these monies, now that we have a bank for these, for the CDBG funds, now the city's engineer, which as of last meeting, we did say was gonna be HRC, we have them coming in on a, in a contained project because of the way that we have to spend these monies, it can't be an overlap over some of the other contracts within the city. But we have a contained sofa work that you have before you hear, they have HRC do the CDBG planning work and layout, where we're gonna put these, these new sidewalk ramps in, and some of the engineering work, obviously, that would come along with being the city's preferred engineering. And then, again, we have the, Derek Schuler can talk a little bit more about how we select these and some of the work that goes into making sure those projects are successful.
So, good evening. This is a full sort of scope project for HRC to design, and then also do all the construction engineering, the inspection, the layout, those sort of things. So, we lasted this, I believe, 2016, 2017 with a project of similar scope, and so this is gonna just kind of follow right along with that. So, the proposal in front of you lays out exactly what they're going to do for us, and they'll be getting started right away, so that we can get started after school's out with this construction of this project. So, I can answer any specific questions you might have, or Roland as well.
Derek, could you just give a little more of a timeline on the schedule for folks watching?
Sure, this'll be a handful of intersections on Wiltshire, first off, on the west side of town, so why don't we start there? It's an area of town that we have not done ADA projects, ramp projects before, so that was one of the big reasons why it was selected. And HRC will basically be, you know, designing the job and laying out for us for public bidding purposes. It does have to be Davis Bacon federal provisions for this bid, so there's particulars with that. And then we'll go into construction. Schedule-wise, they'll get started right away on design, and then basically, we're looking at having construction start after July 1st and be wrapped up pretty quick during the summer months. You know, this is an area near schools, so we would rather work on it during, when school's out.
Excellent, thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember?
Thank you, Your Honor, just a quick question. I noticed on your list of Wiltshire and Bacon, you're only doing two corners, so are the other two already done, or are they held in abeyance for later?
They are done already, I do believe that was done with a different project. We're gonna double-check those ramps, just to make sure they do meet ADA guidelines. I expect they do, but we'll double-check the slopes on those, but yeah, two of those four ramps are already done.
Thank you.
Additional, Mr. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you guys for helping keep track of this project and bring this before us tonight. As we ramp this up, will we be reaching out to the residents in the area and letting them know specifics, like this corner will be done on this weekend, that kind of stuff? How do we let specific individuals know?
Sure, and we'll probably follow the pattern that we did the last time, which is a news, neighborhood news, or a flyer that we actually hand-deliver to each resident that's impacted by this construction, scope, schedule, contacts, those sort of things will be on that. So, we did that with the last ADA project, and I think we'll do the same thing here. We'll also have some information on our infrastructure page on the DPW website.
And what, for any given intersection, what would be the approximate timeframe that folks could anticipate, given, you know, reasonable weather conditions and all that stuff, of course? Are we talking weeks, are we talking days, hours?
You're talking days, you're talking just a few days, removals, placement, you know, with sidewalk ramps, you know, you can, foot traffic, you can get on those quicker than you can roadways where you have to wait at least a week to get on, so it should be a few days once they get going. We're interested in getting them in and getting them out as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? As Director Schuler mentioned, the whole project is scheduled to go from July 1st to about the middle of August is the timeline.
Maybe a resident here?
Yep, behind you, Mr. Schuler.
Charles Terrill from Berkeley, a quick question. The agreement that was talked about at the last meeting, has that been executed? It has not, okay. What about coverage for things like insurance coverage, warranties, indemnities, liabilities? That was not included in the paperwork in the package? So, there is no overarching contract with HRC to cover those types of issues? What about coverage for these kinds of issues with HRC?
The, Roland Alex with Hubble Roeth and Clark, we currently have insurance that we've provided to the city that we provide every year, so we do have proper insurance, and we'll be working with the city manager, Matt, to finalize the contract, and that's just on the to-do list, but we are covered from an insurance standpoint.
All right, then if things like warranties, indemnities, liabilities are not covered, I would suggest and urge that this be postponed until the contract is executed.
Just as a point of note, engineers don't warranty their work, that's...
No, no, I'm not saying warranty your work. It's a legal term of warranties. You're laying, you're laying yourself out as being professionals and licensed, so you're warranting that you have all of that.
Okay.
Not a warranty of...
Got it.
...it's gonna last.
Thank you, we understand, yes, thank you.
So, I urge you to postpone until the contract is executed.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Any additional questions or thoughts from councilmembers on this item? Seeing none, thank you both for being here this evening. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1619?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
And Turbrant.
Yes. M-1619 has been approved. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-1719, matter of awarding the contract for the Coolidge Highway water main extension to the lowest qualified bidder, Brinko Excavating LLC of Oak Park, Michigan, an amount of $638,823. In addition, allocate $42,076.10 for construction engineering services to Hubble Roeth and Clark, and $63,882.30 for construction contingencies.
Is there a motion to approve M-1719?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, this is a long-planned project, we're excited to be up to this point here. Within your bid, within your council packet, you'll see the results of the bid that we went out to, as well as the agreement we have with the city's engineers on this, as well as a memo outlining much of the reasons and justifications from public works director Derek Schuler. And so this was a publicly-bidet item, we went out to Mitten, we got a couple of really good bids, and thankfully, we have a very qualified bidder in place that we think is gonna be, do a really good job on this project.
Mr. Schuler, you wanna tell us a little bit more about the project?
Sure thing. So, this is a project that was identified in our capital improvement plan, it's a new water main on Coolidge between 12 Mile and Webster, and it will be going in in the west green belt along that stretch. So, we really don't have any impacts on Coolidge Road itself, and then up at Webster, we will have some road impacts. It extends west on Webster, a block or two thereabouts, so we will have some road impacts there. But this is a new water main project, so this does a couple of things for us. Number one, we get a water main loop out of this, we eliminate a dead end that currently exists on Coolidge in the same stretch, and we improve flows to the, basically, the entire northern side of town with this project. It will be, as water main projects go, a relatively simple job, there are no service connections that we're aware of with this, so this is truly distribution line type of project. We will be doing it directionally drilling, so there will be limited excavations in the area, so limited restoration, and we'll be tying in to the existing main that's on Webster Road. We'll also be providing new fire hydrants, new gate valves along the stretch, providing stubs to Edwards and Morrison for potential future connections, if that's something that we want to do. So, again, a fairly simple job, and we're excited to get started with this, and everything will be wrapped up, you know, we're targeting this fiscal year, so we're looking to wrap up by July 1st with the project. As far as a start date, I know everyone's concerned about that, so that's yet to be determined. Contingent upon tonight, we'll meet with the contractor and the engineers and go over the schedule with them. I don't see any issue with it whatsoever, and my understanding is they're pretty eager to get started as well. So, as soon as we have a start date and more information, we'll post that on the city website. We've already got a tab there for this project that will be growing with more information after tonight's meeting, and, yeah, we're looking forward to this. This is something that we've been planning for a couple of years now, so this will definitely help things on the north side.
Thank you, and as Director said, this is a project that has been planned for, for at least a couple of years at this point. It's a large expenditure, but it's certainly something that we knew was coming, and then we've been able to plan for that. Additional questions for Mr. Schuler?
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you for seeing this project through thus far. As mentioned earlier, it's been on our docket for a while, and certainly much-needed improvements here. You used some impressive technical language there a moment ago, I was wondering if you could share, sort of for those in the area, what the notion of directional drilling and all that kind of stuff means to, you know, average commuters just trying to go about their day-to-day lives?
Sure, so it's similar to what some of these communication companies are doing, so they'll actually be drilling from the upside of the ground into the ground, the new pipe, and putting it in that way. Because we don't have existing main there now, this is a real perfect candidate for this type of technology, and the fact that we don't have really any connections is also a reason why this is the way to go, and why it's cost-effective to do this type of, use this type of technology. So, we haven't, I don't know that we've done a lot of directional drilling in Berkeley per se, at least public-wise, I've certainly done some project, Roland, I'm sure can speak to many, so it was a good fit for this job from day one. So, we're looking forward to doing it, and I think it's gonna be a way to move through quickly and with the least amount of impact to our residents and traveling public.
So, when you mentioned the green belt, that's that green stretch of grass there between the roads, so if I'm going northbound or southbound, to what extent would I, maybe at Webster, you mentioned there might be some...
Webster, you'll definitely notice some activity, so we'll be working in the western green belt, so not in the boulevard, not in the center boulevard, but in the western green belt.
Green belt, okay.
Yep, I know I keep using that term, so on the western side of the road, outside of that footprint of the road, we are planning to put some irrigation lines across Coolidge to the median for potential future use as well, I didn't mention that before, but it just seems like the right time to do that if we ever wanted to irrigate those boulevards in the center, so that will also be a part of the job.
That's nice, it seems like the folks on the east side of that green belt there may not really need this service as much as the folks on the west there, so I'm glad that's a good choice.
He's referring to the cemetery. We weren't aware.
Take care, everyone.
Councilmember Dean?
Thank you, I just have a question about, I just don't know what this means. The general scope of work includes the abandonment of a short section of existing eight-inch water main.
So, we do have a dead end stub currently on Coolidge, and it's not, that's not something we like to see. Stubbs cause lots of problems with the movement of water, and so that's a constant headache for us, so we'll be removing, well, we're not removing it, we'll be abandoning that line in place, it'll end up being filled with grout as an abandonment of that. So, that's the old eight-inch line that will no longer be in service.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Henin?
Yes, even though this is, this is on Coolidge, though, north of 12 Mile, do we anticipate any impact on the road diet experiment that will be going on?
Good question, and, yes, we are in different technically zones of the road, you know, there potentially could be some overlap there, and we're working closely with Vivian to try to have these schedules work, so that, you know, we're hoping that the markings can get down before, you know, they start, or maybe they start in a different area of the project, just to try to create as much of a gap there as possible, but I don't foresee any conflicts as far as the two projects together at all.
Excellent. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor, just to build off my colleague's question a little bit, and it's actually more of a comment than anything else, but I think that we should explore adding this to sort of the communication strategy, so residents know exactly, I know they're two very separate projects, but, so we have an idea of what's going on, that way, nobody's kind of taken by surprise.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Does Wool, in fact, shut southbound Coolidge down, one lane down, during a period, so we only have one lane southbound on Coolidge during the project?
We're not expecting really any Coolidges, Councilman, on Coolidge, there's a potential at the intersection where the connection's being made, that we may have to take a lane there potentially, but I don't view that as a long-term item at all, and Roland, I don't know if you have that, yeah.
I would agree with that.
So, we're really not expecting any Coolidge traffic concerns. Now, on the north side, and maybe that's what you're alluding to, we will have a lane reduction there as you move in from Royal Oak, so we're working with Royal Oak, Beaumont Alliance to, on that lane reduction, so yes, that will, that will be a lane reduction.
Coming into 12 Mile, we'll have a lane reduction.
That's correct.
And we'll also have an open trench dig on Webster to connect up...
That is correct.
...that section, so that will be, that'll be shut down for a while also.
Webster will have an open cut section, so that will be shut down as well. So, as those points of the project come into play, we'll be sure to update those in the area that that is coming, you know, because a good part of this job is gonna be in the green belt, but then that portion of the job will be impacting the road for sure.
So, along with, in our communication strategy, we need to identify that to the residents.
That will be the key. When that work on Webster begins, that will be the key communication point because of all the traffic implications that it will have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the directional drilling is allowing us to hopefully have less impact than normal, but there are still going to be challenges and complications, and in the interest of safety, we are gonna have to obviously make some closures, and the biggest thing is, again, letting residents know, letting the folks know when, why, and what they can expect moving forward. So, communication strategy's been mentioned a few times, and it's obviously something that we've talked about, and we are preparing for this, there is, like you mentioned, the tab, but we need to make sure that we are over-communicating, especially as it relates to any closures on Coolidge. Thank you. I believe you have a resident behind you, Mr. Schuler?
Charles Terrill from Berkeley. The three bidding companies, were any of them certified small business, veteran-owned, minority-owned, women-owned companies?
I don't know the answer, Roland, do you know if they were?
Was that even a question that was asked in the bid documents?
It was not required information on the bid documents.
Thank you, Chuck. Any additional questions or comments?
I would just like to clarify, when these things go out to bid, they're open to everyone, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, if you, do you have to stipulate who you're looking for, or are you targeting specific, like, mine... specific, like minority-owned, you know, all of the things that Mr. Terrill had mentioned? It is, anyone that has this company is free to bid these projects, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
I would have just one comment, if I could, while I have the microphone, I'll steal it. Just HRC, and myself, and Edward Zimish are very appreciative for the opportunity to continue to serve the city. Over the last five years, I've really, Eddie and I have really found that you're great people to work with, and we just appreciate the opportunity. So although we're not officially under contract yet, we do look forward to serving the city for as long as you'll have us. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being here to answer any additional questions that we had as it relates to these projects. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. 1719?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 1819, matter of approving a one-year contract extension of the 2015-2018 bargaining agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Officers Association, BPSOA.
Is there a motion to approve M. 1819?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard, with support from a number of people. But Councilmember Dean is closest to me, and that's the one I heard the loudest. Mr. Baumgartner?
I think, Mr. Mayor, this is one of two related items. Our Public Safety Department has two bargaining units within it, one specific to the patrol officers and one specific to the command officers. The first one to come before you today is the officers' one, much in the same, much in the same vein of what we saw last year. The 2015 to 2018 agreement that we've had with the bargaining unit has been fruitful for both the unit as well, as well as the city. Last year, the only thing that was requested of our bargaining unit was to extend a 12-month 2% increase and continue to opt out of PA 152, which is state legislation specific to health care. They again came to us this year, and we discussed some of the options we had in front of us, and ultimately came to attentive agreement to do yet another 12-month extension with the same parameters. And so this is kind of a flash forward to where we are today. The agreement's holding up well, and we're, administration as well as the bargaining unit is jointly requesting approval of another 12-month extension.
Questions or thoughts from council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a comment, Your Honor. This takes us through July of 2019, so it's the year starting this July, right?
Will take us through June 30, 2020.
Twenty, I mean, excuse me. It starts with 19.
Yes, sir.
I'm a year off, I guess. Yeah. Thank you.
Any additional comments from council? This is obviously something that the city and the unions engage in, depending on the length of the contract. And we certainly appreciate the fact that we were able to come to an agreement on extension that seems to make both sense for both parties. And seeing no additional comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. 1819?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. We will now move on. Ms. Boucher, would you please call item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 1819, matter of approving a one-year contract extension of the 2015-2018 bargaining agreement between the City of Berkeley and the Berkeley Public Safety Command Officers Association, BPSOA.
Is there a motion to approve M. 1819?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard, with support, Councilmember Gavin. I have a feeling I know what you're going to say, but Mr. Baumgartner?
Exactly the same thing again. We have great bargaining units. They're a pleasure to work with, and we were able to quickly come to an agreement with the command officers as well. So much of the, and the story is exactly the same as much of what we talked about with the patrol side.
That's right.
So one year, again, 12 months, and opting out of PA 152 and a 2% wage increase.
Additional comments, questions? Again, this is similar to what we talked about. Now we are talking about the Command Officers Association this time. Seeing no additional comments or questions, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M. 1819?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 0619, matter of authorizing amendment of the fiscal year 2018-2019 operating budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R. 0619?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Henon. Mr. Baumgartner?
I think, Mr. Mayor, the city's finance director, Mr. Mark Pollak, who's joining us this evening, has prepared a set of quarterly updates for you. We intend to keep this schedule moving forward, but we'll bring to you quarterly budget amendments as the year progresses, as projects become a little bit clearer, and as the needs of the city, you know, potentially change from the last time when we initially set the budget, it is necessary at times to do budget amendments. So Mr. Pollak has prepared quite a bit of information for you, including a very well-written memo, some of the backup materials on this, and any other information that you may have. I'm grateful he has joined us this evening to discuss.
Mr. Finance Director?
Yes, we, with this being my first go-around, there's not a lot of amendments on here. I expect next quarter there'll be more, since we have our settlement of taxes, and I'm really still getting familiar with the accounts here. Quite a few more accounts here than where I was before here in Clausen, but things all work the same from community to community. So quarterly budget amendments make sense. It keeps the council informed. We can certainly give you monthly statements, quarterly statements, and we can certainly talk about that during budget time. But the largest amendments that I'm proposing to you, the largest itself, is the fire truck, which was budgeted at $900,000, is going to cost just under $1 million with the addition. So that's the largest amendment. There are a few others. DDA had some that didn't impact bottom line, and for the most part, in the other funds, they were, you know, what I would call unforeseen budget amendments, especially in the general fund. We had some GASB requirements and things of that nature that require amendments to things that, quite honestly, you couldn't have foreseen when you set the budget. So these are generally referred to as housekeeping items, but it's required by the state, and that's why they're before you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Questions or comments for our finance director from council? Seem pretty straightforward, as you mentioned, in terms of housekeeping items. Also mentioned that there will be additional amendments, most likely coming in the next quarter. And the biggest one, of course, is what you mentioned, was the fire truck, which we talked about about a month ago. Thank you for preparing the report, as comprehensive as it was, for us, and for being here tonight to make sure that the residents understood what we were talking about. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R. 0619?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O. 0219, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amending Division 4 of Article 8 of Chapter 82, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to prohibit the possession and use of cigarettes, tobacco, and nicotine products by minors, and the sale, giving, or furnishing of cigarettes, tobacco, and nicotine products, including electronic cigarettes to minors, and to prescribe penalties for violations. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve O. 0219?
Motion to approve.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Who supported that?
Support.
Supported by Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
This is a returning item, so we do the first reading. We have a discussion on the needs and what we're trying to satisfy with updating the ordinance text. And then the reason we do some time between the first and second reading is to give council members the opportunity to take a look at this, explore options, before we do a second reading, and which would also have the effect of being an adoption as well. And so I know there was a request to do some additional conversations before the second reading and adoption is passed.
Councilmember Henon?
Yes, so several members of the community were suggesting that for the infraction part for minors, that we add community service as an option. I don't have kids. I don't know if that works, but I think I would like to suggest that we add that. That does give the judge an additional tool in his toolkit for whatever he sees would fit best. Does the $100 fine work better? Does the, with the community service, some combination? So, you know, my proposal is to add to the penalty section for minors with a fine up to $100 or community service.
Mr. Turdy?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually had some brief dialogue with Mr. Henon about this late last week, and I have absolutely no problem with what he's proposing. And in fact, sent over this morning to the city manager some alternative language for the ordinance. And it would actually be as simple as adding in Section 82-390A, just the phrase "or community service" at the end of it, just like Councilman Henon said. Then that would give the judge, as was mentioned, the discretion based on the circumstances as the judge sees them, as to what would be the appropriate penalty or deterrent. I should mention as well that this is actually consistent, what we're talking about here tonight, if council adopts it, is consistent with what the penalty provision is for minors in possession of marijuana under the new statute that the voters just approved in November, whereby the penalty for underage possession, at least the first offense, is $100 fine or community service plus forfeiture of the marijuana. So it makes sense that if community service is appropriate in that instance, that it probably would be, and I'm not equating the two behaviors, but if it's appropriate for underage marijuana possession, it makes sense probably, it's certainly consistent, that that would be an appropriate penalty provision for the judge to consider with regard to our anti-vaping ordinance that you're considering tonight for second reading.
And then the judge would then have the leeway to determine the appropriate amount of community service?
Correct.
I feel like in many cases, if the offender had the option, they would probably go with the money over the community service. So from that standpoint?
It depends. I had that--
Maybe a deterrent.
I had that discussion with Mr. Henon as well, and I can tell you, back at that age, the $100 would have stung me more than a day of free work, which I was used to doing for my parents anyway.
Yeah, it's a little different, free work. Councilmember Dean?
Might we want to consider, with a fine up to $100 and/or community service? Or is that implied? Could the judge, you know, makes both of those sanctions, or is it just either, it's either the fine or the community service?
Usually one or the other.
One or the other, okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Building on that, in the news lately, they've talked about these things called sentencing guidelines. Is there somewhere else, is it written, what it would be appropriate range for somebody to consider for community service, or is it completely at the discretion of the judge? They could assign one person a day, they could do someone else three weeks, depending on how they felt that day? Is there any precedence elsewhere, either in the marijuana law? Or would we be opening ourselves up to additional? You said this is, this is consistent with others, so certainly I think it's a good idea. What I'm just curious about is, is it written somewhere what these guidelines might look like, or is it completely at the judge's discretion?
It'll be at the judge's discretion, based on how the judge views the circumstances, both the nature of the offense, as well as the judge's evaluation of the defendant. I mean, there certainly are sentencing guidelines. Those really apply more to, you know--
Slightly larger ticket items, yeah, for sure.
Not really so much to misdemeanors and civil infractions, where we rely on our, we elect and rely on our district court judges to be able to make those decisions and to do it fairly and consistently.
Sure.
And I can tell you, our, I can't speak for all judges, but--
Yes.
I think our judges in the 44th District Court do an excellent job with that.
I would concur with that for sure, and certainly my inquiry here wasn't about equating this with the larger ticket items that we may have read about, but just the nature of the precision, right? $100 is a pretty precise amount, whereas community service is just eh. And now, of course, again, our current judge that's in there today, I have the utmost faith in, and we have to think to the future where, you know, who knows will be in there down the road.
I mean, the judges have their preferred programs, because community service is not a newer, novel thing.
Correct.
They already assess and levy that for, you know, for different things, misdemeanor types of violations, driving offenses, that sort of thing. So they have their preferred programs, which can range, you know, anything from, we see the crews picking up trash along the side of the road to, you know, to other types of community service types of--
Sure, sure.
--of activities. But we generally leave that to the discretion of the court to figure out what best suits the circumstances.
So there's a precedence, even if it's not prescribed?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for the attorney? Mr. Seren, if we approve this with that small amendment, we do not need to come back again for a second reading?
That's correct.
Because we are not--
That's correct.
Material-changing this enough?
Exactly. If we were doing a complete, you know, rewrite, changing the nature of the ordinance, I'd say you should bring it back again. I view this as a minor change that's consistent with the ordinance that you saw at first reading, so I'm comfortable with moving ahead to final adoption tonight, if that's the inclination of the council.
Seeing no additional questions, we have the ordinance in front of us with the current change, current addition of the language at the end. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on O. 0219 as amended?
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to communications, and I believe Councilmember Stedman is first up today.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, I am. First of all, beautification committee, I don't have a report from that tonight. They will meet again the second Wednesday of next month, and we'll be looking for projects to work on through the summer. Dennis, I thought your suggestion of making some paint, new paint and repairs to the gazebo was excellent. So, okay. The Citizens Advisory Committee will meet again on the 27th of Mar, no, of March, and they are still looking for block ambassadors. So if you know somebody who would be good at this job, please refer them to Natalie Price, or Sue Saturro, or Jay Grossman, or Matt, or me. In terms of the library, there's a lot of programs going on in the library right now. Please check, Matt gives a press release every month for the programs coming up. Please check, Matt gives a press release every month for the programs coming up. There are so many to go through them every, every time we have a meeting, but please check press releases, check the, the library website. There's programs for preschoolers, for elementary school-aged kids, for teens, for adults. I'm sure there's something there that you can find that pertains to you or your family. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of things. This is National Poison Prevention Week, so I want to give everybody some tips. Tips for vet poisoning: Be prepared for an emergency. Keep the national free poison hotline number at your fingertips by saving the number on your mobile phone. It is 1-800-222-1222. Practice safe storage habits: Always store medicines and hazardous substances away and outside of children. Keep these substances in their original child-resistant, child-resistant containers. Read and follow all label directions. Review medicine and product labels before use, especially before giving medicine to children. And detect invisible threats. Install carbon monoxide detectors in your home. So, that's the number. Again, this is also, coming up next week is Severe Weather Awareness Week. They'll be sounding the sirens at 1:00 PM on Wednesday, March 27th, so don't necessarily need to run to the shelter, but you should think about what you'd do if, if it was a real one. So, be prepared for that. And lastly, on Wednesday, March 27th, from 5:30 to 7:00, the Berkeley Chamber of Commerce is having a, a state-of-your-business event. So, if any businesses or business owners are, are watching or here, this will be at the collaborative center at the high school, and it'll be a chance to talk to the chamber, talk to other chamber members, to get briefed by the city and briefed by the school district on what's going on in the city as relating to helping businesses. So, there's some handouts on the table over there. If anybody needs them, help yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. Continuing the, the business support theme, good organization that works in partnership with the chamber on many occasions is our Downtown Development Authority, DDA. Their board meeting, their board meeting was last Wednesday, and their very first Ladies' Night Out of the season is this upcoming Thursday, March 21st, from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM, up and, up and down and across and throughout our downtown region. And there's a free LNO bus, uh, uh, party bus, LNO Ladies' Night Out, uh, party bus available to shuttle folks around the downtown and enjoy in the festivities. They're also continuing to welcome inputs and feedback on the, the draft Downtown Berkeley Master Plan as well. For more information on that plan, or the events, or how you too can participate in these fun things, please visit the DDA website, which is downtownberkeley.com for more info. The Historical Committee met last Sunday, and preparations continue for Berkeley Days, as well as rotating in seasonal events within the museum. The, the committee also welcomes donations from residents, both current and former residents, of items that are of interest to the city's history, whether it's a photo or an artifact, something like that, that helps preserve and, and promote all that we've been through and the future that we have awaiting us. We look forward to that. If you're, if you're not comfortable actually giving something to the committee, if you have a photo or an artifact or an article or something, the committee can scan it in and archive it appropriately and then return the originals to you, so that way you're contributing to the city and also preserving your own treasures. The museum is open most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, except for holidays and things like that, and Wednesdays from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. The Technology Advisory Committee meets in two days on Wednesday, and they also welcome input on ways in which we can apply technology to help both city operations and also the services that we provide to our residents and businesses. And if you have any specific questions or ideas, feel free to contact Stan Lisca, our Director of Innovation, our city manager, or even myself. I'd be happy to help liaise that to the team, if liaise is a verb. I kind of made that up. It could be. And it was, it might be, I don't know. Douglas Horton once said, "Drive slow and enjoy the scenery, or drive fast and enjoy the scenery." And I'd like to thank all those who are choosing to do the former and drive a little bit slower these days to enjoy our downtown. If you want to go fast, you can do that somewhere else. Our, our downtown is to be enjoyed safely. You may have noticed that we have these new blinky light sign things on 12 Mile and Coolidge. I don't think that's a technical term, though. Blinky light sign thing, but that's what I call them. And in, in preliminary data indicates that after the sign was installed, we took some data to kind of get a baseline, and then when we started having the light, the sign blink, as my name implies, the average traffic speed went down 2 miles an hour. And it could be coincidence, it could be weather-related, it's too soon to tell, but I think that is a positive indication of just being aware of how fast you're driving in relation to what the actual speed limit is, is, is helpful, because we, again, preliminary data indicates that after activating the blinky light sign thing, we, we saw a 2 mile per hour decrease in speed, which I think is a great step in the right direction. And I won't get too far into the whole distracted driving thing. I talked a lot about that last time, but if you are interested in more facts or details or communication materials that you can share with others, presentations and data sheets and things about the hazards of distracted driving and some of the really shocking statistics, which I won't get into here, there's an easy website, NDd, so, and, like, stop, and distracted driving, NDd.org, for facts and presentation and materials about why it's bad to, to drive while distracted. Most modern cellphone operating systems have a do not disturb while driving feature. It's really easy to activate. You mostly just push a button and it works. Please consider giving that a try. You will be amazed at how awesome this world is around us when you're driving, when you're not busy looking at your cellphone and things like that at every stoplight. So, please give that a try, and, and here's to keeping our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Dean?
So, I had the pleasure of attending the Honor Guard fundraiser, well, spaghetti dinner fundraiser, benefiting our public safety Honor Guard. That was held at the Legion on Saturday night. It was tasty, and there was a general great vibe in the room. Hopefully, they raised a lot of money. There were great things to bid on, and it was a wonderful community event, and I'm happy that I was able to attend. On the Parks and Rec front, Parks and Recreation will be running a vacation camp from April 2nd through the 5th. You may register online or by calling the Parks and Recreation Department at 248-658-3470. And Breakfast with the Bunny is back. It's being held on Saturday, April 13th. Two times available, and you may register. One is at 9:00, one's at 10:30. Deadline for registration is April 10th. Again, you can register by calling, or you, you can register online. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
Yes, the only thing I have tonight is announcing my next talk with Dennis. That's going to be Tuesday, April 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the normal place at the library. Thank you.
Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Real quick, since our last council meeting, there's been no Planning Commission meeting. The next one will be March 26th at 7:30. Same with the ZBA, there was no meeting, and there won't be one in March. But that does not mean we are not without some planning and zoning training that came along. Many colleagues up here, along with members from the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, came together and talked through some of the statutory requirements, processes, best practices. So, got a lot of great information there for Planning Commission members, city council members, Zoning Board of Appeals members. So, that was, that was great. And then had the pleasure with, with Councilmember Dean to go give an update to the Berkeley American Legion about kind of the goings-on at the city, and so, that was a, a real treat to be able to attend their meeting. So, that's all I have. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, get to go to the, the Public Safety Honor Guard spaghetti fundraiser. As, as Councilmember Dean said, it was a great time, fun for all ages. My kids got to meet a bunch of little new little play friends, and he got to eat some great pasta, and hopefully, as, as you said, contribute some money to a great cause in, in the Honor Guard. They do wonderful things. They travel as much as they can and represent not only our department well, but our city as a whole very well. And so, it was, it was a great chance to get out and, and see some good friends again. The only thing, other thing I have to contribute is city staff continues to work diligently and preparing a budget for the upcoming budget year. As I said, I think in a previous meeting, this is a, a fun time for us, because we get to start talking about goals and visions and some of our accomplishments and where we're going, how we're going to put resources towards implementing city council's vision of, of the city. So, a lot of fun, exciting things going on around City Hall and, and the city's buildings. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening.
Oh, okay. I will echo the comments of my colleagues as it relates to the success of the Honor Guard fundraiser, but I want to kind of draw two other points out of that. First off, it was extremely well-attended, and, and part of the reason that I believe it is so well-attended is because not only do our residents really respect the work of the Honor Guard, but our public safety officers in general, and are extremely supportive of all of the additional work that our officers routinely go to for the city, whether it's, you know, the lids for kids that we know about, the Fire Safety Open House, the Citizens Academy that's ongoing, all the number of ways that our public safety officers contribute their time. I, I think it was a nice show of the residents to respect that and to show some of their time and also funding to support, continue supporting our Honor Guard. Additionally, I do want to also recognize the Legion. Often here, we, we hear, you know, we had an event, we attended at the Legion, we attended an event at the Legion. The American Legion is a tremendous neighbor and resident for the city. They host a number of events, not only for a fee, but also some hosts, or they, they host some events where they donate their time and their space as well. And as, as many times as in the last few days, we've had Honor Guard fundraiser, there was an event the following day. There was a Euchar night there for the Friends of the Parks and Rec not too long ago, and of course, their fish fries that are going on during Lent especially are extremely well-attended, and I want to thank them for, for being such a good neighbor in the City of Berkeley. I want to congratulate again Ethan and Eric for the tremendous accomplishment of earning the rank of Eagle Scout, and I also want to thank all the scouts that stuck with us tonight. It is, yeah, it is, it's awesome to see so many young faces in the crowd. It's not always the case, and folks, I understand it's not always the most exciting stuff that we're talking about up here, but nonetheless, it, it is how the city conducts business, and I thank you guys for, for being here. Hopefully, you get a merit badge or something out of the DSA.
Patience.
Yeah, for, for sitting through, and we're pretty efficient tonight, actually. Picked a good night to attend. March is reading month, which I'm sure all of you in school are aware, so as we still have a few days left in March, please take some time to read. That's not only for our library director, but that's also for my wife, who's a librarian of the, of a, one of the elementary schools here in the city. So, please continue to read, read to your kids, read all the time. And a final update for our next meeting, we do anticipate having the work session for recreational marijuana at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Want to make sure that I'm letting the residents know that that is still certainly a part of the plan, and look forward to that conversation. With that, a number of my colleagues are getting ready to head out of town to head to the MML conference. Some are leaving as soon as this meeting is over, some are going to make the trek early in the morning. But with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sound moved?
Support.
Motion adjourned by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. The March 18th, 2019 meeting of the 37th Council is adjourned.